Welcome to the regular school board meeting of the St. Peter School Board, Monday, March 16th, 2020, in the governor's room of the community center. It is 6:30 and I call the meetings are ordered. Like to do the pledge of allegiance? Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would accept a motion to consider and adopt the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider request to speak on the agenda seems a little silly since it's an empty room, but I will say it again. We will consider request to speak on the agenda. You can get your non-existent comments to Sarah because again, there's no one here. We'll move right into the agenda and the approval of consent agenda items. These are all given to the board ahead of time. We've read through them. Are there any particular items that we'd like to pull out?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to talk about letter H.
Okay.
Which is the acceptance of the retirement of a St. Peter High School Technology Education Instructor, Mr. Warren Peterson, effective at the end of the year. I'm not exactly sure how many years Mr. Peterson has been with us, but it's been, it's been quite a few.
Well, we'll pull that out. Thank you. Any other items?
Mr. Chair, I went down to the district office and the bills are all in order.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
As related to number six on the consent agenda.
Perfect. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Absent letter H.
Absent letter H. That is correct.
I'll make my motion.
Tracy, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second. I'll second it.
Excellent. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion of the consent agenda items? Minus H. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda minus H, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we can talk about H.
Yeah, I, I would just like to recognize Mr. Peterson for many, many years of service with the St. Peter Public Schools. I don't know how many.
No, I think it's gotta be 35 plus. And I think the other thing that's important about Mr. Peterson is that he was the, the person who started the Habitat for Humanity House along with a senior student in 1995. And so they've constructed well over 25 houses for community members in the St. Peter School District since that time. And, and so we really, among all of the other things he's done, great relationships with students and and others, that is a pretty phenomenal track record.
I know that he has helped my son to sheet rock and, and now my son tells me what I'm doing wrong. So, it's fine with me.
Excellent. Well, Mr. Peterson, we really, really appreciate your years of service to the district. Thank you very much. I think it's with bittersweet acknowledgement that we do want to honor his wishes and is there a motion to accept his retirement?
I so move.
Second. We do have a motion and a second for item number H. All those in favor of accepting H, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Warren Peterson. Student spotlight.
We have no students here tonight. No, and probably won't have students at future board meetings unless, you know, for the foreseeable future, I would say.
That makes a lot of sense. There are no, no reason to put anybody in any extra contact with other, other people. So, thank you. Moving on to our information items, the Native American Parent Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chair, members of the school board, just wanted to update you on the fact that as I know you're aware that Minnesota law requires that all school districts with 10 or more Native American students have an advisory committee to help ensure that students are receiving culturally relevant and equitable educational opportunities and meeting the needs of all students, including our Native American students. This committee was established in St. Peter in 2017 and on, the committee meets on a bi-monthly basis to review that charge to assure that students are receiving a culturally relevant and equitable educational opportunity. And on an annual basis, they take a vote of their committee to determine if, from their perspective, the school district is in compliance with that charge and that statute or not. And as you see in your packet, the committee on February 26th issued a vote of concurrence. So they are in concurrence in that we are meeting that charge. It's nothing that requires your formal action, but it does require that it's presented to the school board and that the school board chairperson and the superintendent sign and date that particular document. Does anybody have any questions? And we would have had, you know, the chair of the council here tonight, but thought that it best that we're not having this big a crowd even though it is a public meeting and people could come to the meeting if they chose.
We really do appreciate that committee and all of our committees that put time and effort into our schools and, and kids and staff. Thank you. Update on school closure plans. We had a special meeting of the board, an emergency meeting of the board to work with the governor's announcement and the mandate that schools take a break last night, but.
I just wanted to, to update you again on, on our plans. A couple of things that we want to talk about. We are in the process of implementing plans to provide school age care for emergency workers. A school age care is defined as students between kindergarten and sixth grade. And we have a survey out there right now to all of our parents to identify if we do have emergency workers or other workers that qualify under that executive order of the governor. And then we need to develop our plan to provide that school age care likely at two sites, but depending upon numbers, it could be at three sites, South Elementary, North Elementary, and possibly the middle school. One of the things that we are also doing is reassigning some of our staff members to provide the care to our students during that particular point in time. We also have sent a survey out to our staff to determine how many of our staff members might benefit from childcare as well. And that's going to be, providing that to our staff members is going to be dependent on how many other parents tell us that they need the care and our ability to meet that particular request. But we're going to try to, we certainly are going to meet the directive of the governor and we're going to try to meet the needs of our staff as well for school age care. So that's in the place, that's scheduled to start on Wednesday. We also have a charge to provide transportation to the, the children that we're going to be caring for during the normal, regular school day timeframe. So we've worked with our Saints' bus company to set up routes and, and provide transportation for students. And I'll get to some other things the bus company is going to be doing in our next point. So that's up and running, set to go on Wednesday, which meets the directive of Governor Walz. Secondly, we are in a position, we're beginning on Wednesday where we will provide meals to students, both breakfast and lunch. Our plan at this point is we've made application to the State Department of Education to allow us to follow the same guidelines that we do with our summer breakfast and lunch program, meaning that any student under the 18 or under in St. Peter will be able to access a breakfast or lunch without having to go through the, the normal school lunch account guidelines, if you will. The bus company also has been working with us and setting up routes where they'll be able to deliver breakfast and lunch in the morning to folks who might be able to come out to a preset set of bus stops that will, will convey to parents and guardians and families via email and voicemail, again, beginning on Wednesday, the 18th. So that's in place. That's another directive of the executive order of Governor Walz. And then we continue to work on plans for the idea of continuity of education and distance learning. Distance learning will begin in the school district on Monday, March 30th. And we don't know for how long. It's likely not to be a short period of time. But again, we don't know the exact timeframe that we'll be dealing with in terms of that distance learning plan. So we are following the end of our third quarter tomorrow with distance learning in place today, or excuse me, flexible learning in place today and tomorrow. Wednesday will mark a teacher workday where we'll button up the third quarter in terms of grades for all of our students. And then we'll begin intense planning on the 19th of March, Thursday, 20th of March, and then all next week. We will need to post our continuity of education plan on our website and communicate that to parents and guardians prior to March 30th. And I feel confident that we're in a position to do that. We have regular daily briefings with the Minnesota Department of Education, weekly briefings with the Minnesota Department of Health, and so I feel like we're in good shape. We've got a, a room set up out at the new high school. They, I will tell you that I'm, I'm not necessarily excited about having to deal with all these things, but personally, I'm excited to get into that big whiteboard out there and, and get things on the wall. And we've got 15 different tasks that we have people working on to set the stage for bringing all staff, all of our staff onboard, beginning Thursday, the 19th for that seven day period. So just wanted to update you on those things. You also have at your spot, the daily briefing that we sent out this afternoon to families. And really what it says is kind of a recap of what I talked about, but just also to note that we determined to keep buildings open tomorrow, as we did today, to allow students and families to come into the building, to pick up personal belongings, medication, band instruments, music instruments, instructional supplies, et cetera. There's a pretty steady stream of, of students and families, not overwhelming, not in any large numbers, but pretty steady stream in all of our buildings today. We also have set up an information email account where any parent, guardian, student, community member can drop a question to us and we'll figure out those big questions and try to respond to those. And we'll try to provide daily updates, or at least every other day, updates to our families and students and staff about our status. So with that, any questions that anybody might have?
Just a comment. I think it's great that you've got a big, on the website, just underneath the video is a big button to just push and to read the latest update. And I think that that's really good. It was very visible and a good idea.
Thank you.
Well done. Very well done.
Thank you.
When, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
When do we anticipate knowing more regarding, getting a lot of questions about spring sports? What, I mean, what do we officially know in regards to that?
What we officially know right now is that there are no event schedule, no practices, no scrimmages, no organized captains practices of any kind. That's what we know at this point. I, it, it's hard to say. I think, quite frankly, I think we're going to be in for the long haul with our distance learning and that would likely mean we won't be having the spring sports season anytime soon.
If you look at Governor Walz, if you look at President Trump and, and what they recommended today, that would say there's not going to be those things. So.
We, we do have as one of our, our 15 tasks, well, two things I want to mention. One, we really want to make sure that we still are able to, to the, to the extent possible, provide those social, emotional services to our students. And we also have a task out there that's, that's really trying to get student voice and meet student needs. So we want to still be connected to our students, to have our students be able to tell us kinds of things that are on their mind and to see if we can react to that at some level. And it's not going to be ideal, you know, as in the case, in point last night, there was a question about the prom. We're not going to be able to organize the prom and we can't have any kind of school sponsored type of prom or connected type of prom. So those are tough things for, for students to handle. And so we're going to do our best to provide supports during this, this time for all of our students.
I think it's, I think it's going to be, I mean, it's hard to tell what's, what's going to be, what would be a week from now. I can't believe where we were last Monday, mentally, as a society and physically, and, and where we are now and which way, which way this is going to progress. So I think as much as you want to anticipate what, what might happen, I wouldn't have guessed we'd be where we are right now, last week, last Monday. So I think it's just best to just kind of take it, you know, plan as far as we can out, you know, focus on March 30th and.
Right. Yeah, we're going to do, and we're, and the, the idea is we're going to do our best to provide the absolute best educational experience we can for all of our students. And I really appreciated Governor Walz's statement where, don't let perfect get in the way of good. So that's, you know, something that we're really going to focus on, doing the very best job we can. Nothing replaces having students together and teachers in front of students and students working with one another, you know, but we're going to do the very best thing we can in the next level in terms of providing education.
Yeah, I saw a quote that was a Minnesota superintendent that said, did we talk about this? All my meetings about this are blending together, but something like, we'll never know if we did enough. Like that won't be reflected in what happens, but if we don't do enough, if we do too little, we'll know that. So it's going to be really hard to gauge success, but I just encourage everybody to follow these recommendations and it's not going to be easy. It hasn't been easy for a couple of days. It's really not going to be easy as the weeks stretch on, but the, the more we self-isolate and, and keep distance better than we are tonight and, and do those types of things, the, the easier that this will be on society and healthcare professionals and all of us, and the quicker we'll be able to get back to normal.
I also will say that, working on some of the flexible learning with the kids today, it was really nice to see the personal notes that a lot of the teachers left for the students because even like, I happen to have one child who really doesn't like school, but he was really bummed when he found out that like, maybe I won't go back, maybe I will, like, you know, that uncertainty. And then to get those personal little messages from teachers was, because it's hard for them too, but it was just nice to, nice to see.
Yeah, as difficult as this is, it's a great reminder that we have fantastic teachers and staff and paras and administrators and a superintendent. So thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to action items. The first is to consider approval of the three-year contract with the new superintendent of schools. So I would turn it over to Dr. Olson.
So what I wanted to do is just hit on, on a couple of the highlights. The, we used as a basis for the contract, the model contract from the Minnesota School Boards Association and the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. And, you know, a lot of the language is standard language. You have in your packet, the identified salary for each of the three years of the contract, $152,833 in 2020, 2021, $155,952 in 2021, 2022, and $159,135 in 2022 and 2023. There's also a defined health insurance contribution, which is full family health insurance. That is very much in line with all of the contracts in our region for superintendents. And, and quite frankly, unless you're in a different kind of situation in your life for most of the superintendents in the state. We also have in the contract, some payment for unused sick leave. The first part is a standard payment, which would be similar to our teacher contract, $45 a day for 185 days, and then a daily rate contribution for up to, then up to 240 days, which would be 55 additional days. Vacation days, 20 vacation days, and there's the ability to turn in five of those vacation days for a daily salary should they not be used. And I think those are primarily the highlights. Under the other provisions in the contract, there are two pieces in there. One is that there are up to eight days of transition time available to the new superintendent prior to June 30th, but they must be approved in advance by the school board chair. And then there's a relocation expense of $6,000 in the contract to help in moving to the St. Peter community. So those are the highlights of the contract. And those last two things again are standard in most contracts, especially the, the transition time and the relocation expense.
And in your contract, we also have transition time for you to help after.
Correct.
As well.
Correct.
Any initial discussion?
I would like to thank Dr. Olson for taking care of this whole process and then coming to us with this negotiated contract. I certainly appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Olson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, would, would there be a motion to approve the contract?
I move. We approve the three-year contract for the super, new superintendent of schools.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And we'll welcome William Graus at on July 1st. So.
And he has tagged in his schedule, assuming that we're able to carry it off, the Hall of Fame induction on July 3rd and the all-school reunion tours of the building. So hopefully we'll be in that position on July 3rd and 4th.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you very much. We've got some, several contracts tonight. So approval of the contract with the district technology director for 2020, 2021.
Well, and the district technology director was hired initially, he was hired on a two-year contract, which ends this June 30th. And so in visiting with negotiations chair, Loken Skard, we talked about trying to get a one-year contract, which would then allow to get back on the same schedule as other contracts a year from now. So extending that contract out one year, standard in terms of what we were with our district administrative team. We had a 3% salary increase. There was one other addition and that was a $2,000 contribution to the HSA account. But in addition to that, we increased the days in the seat by five days. So from 225 days to 230 days. So with that, I would recommend the approval of that contract.
Any initial discussion?
Just that, this is a one-year deal to get it in line with some of our other administrators? Is that correct?
Yeah, to, really, really all of our contracts go through June 30th, 2021. So it puts it in line. There could be a possibility that, in, in, you know, some of the contracts that we could go back and we could even initiate a negotiation right now. You can't do that with some contracts with bargaining groups, but with individuals you could.
Okay.
But this is again, that, that was the reason for, it has nothing, Chris is a, I think, a phenomenal technology director and he's a real team member. So he's really stepping up to the plate right now, I can tell you that, along with our other administrative team members. So the one-year contract does not reflect any concerns about his performance at all.
Mr. Chair, yeah, it just gets us back on with all the other individual contracts.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the contract with the district technology director?
I, I move.
A second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the contract with the district technology director for 2020, 2021, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And another contract, we need to consider the approval of modification of contract with administrative assistant for 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021.
Yeah, this contract modification really reflects what the past practice has been in terms of work outside of the regular contractual days and hours. This year has been, of course, we're a pretty unusual year with special board meetings, superintendent search and so forth. But typically what we've done is provided a couple of days of, if you will, comp time, but then also payment on an hourly basis for work performed for these kinds of duties. We thought it was important as we, I thought it was important as I looked at the contract to have it in contractual language because, you know, we've gone from one superintendent to another superintendent to another superintendent. We want to make sure that things don't get lost in translation and somebody's like, well, where is that written down and where, you know, where did that come from? So it's really just a clarification in contractual language of what our practice has been. I would recommend the approval of how we deal with those hours duty days and compensation for time spent at board meetings and study sessions, again, outside of the context of the regular workday.
Absolutely. Any initial discussion? Do we have a motion?
I so move.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Just to clarify, I don't think it's an increase from what the negotiated contract was. I just want to clarify that. It's just the same. It's just clarification so that Sarah gets credit for when she's here all the time.
And you are here all the time. Thank you so much.
Sarah does a great job.
Thank you, Sarah. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And next contract, we need to consider the approval of employment agreement and contract with the MARS, M-A-R-S-S account.
Yeah, the MARS account position is a new, new position that we've talked about really for the past probably four or five months in the business office. You approved the person for that position in Chris Leclerc and your consent agenda. And this is really the, the employment agreement and contract with the MARS account. So it's really two pieces. The, the contract is for the period beginning July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2021. And that again, for that one year, then puts us back in line with two-year contracts. But then you have an employment agreement as well. And that employment agreement really just identifies a prorated insurance payment and a daily salary for the period of April 1st through June 30th, and that's 55 days. So we really don't have a contract for that period of time. We turn that into an employment agreement to get us, when we hire positions in, towards the end or middle of the year, to the end of the year, so you get to a contract. And the salary and benefit package is in line with other folks in the district office. And I will say this, that, you know, particularly the times we're in right now, we, we really, we talked today about, in our district office staff meeting, about continuity of business services. So it's particularly important all of the time, but when you're in a, in a situation like we are in right now, that we have critical backup for every one of our positions so that if someone's out, we don't miss a beat in terms of paying the bills or paying salary and paying insurance benefits and meeting state and federal requirements. So I really appreciate the opportunity to have this position in place because I think it's going to be very valuable.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I so move to accept this contract.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I was going to ask, I know this may sound weird, but weren't, wasn't it mentioned at some point that MARS is going away and it's going to be something different? I mean, is that just semantics that we don't, we don't have to worry about that with the contract, do we? It just evolves into whatever it will be.
It stays for the time being as MARS and it's moving into something called EDFI. And so it may be that the next contract, we change the title of the person, but it's really the student accounting, which is critically important.
Right.
Because our dollars are generated based on our average daily membership, our, our student count. And so really, in 2020, 2021, we're going to be on a dual system. We're still on the MARS system, but we're transitioning to the EDFI system. So Chris and other staff are going to almost be in a dual, dual mode there as we're transitioning. So, yeah. So, yeah, you're right.
It's no big deal.
No big deal.
Is that?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to add, boy, the MARS is very important and very confusing, but yeah, for the benefit of the school, that is a very important position.
We have a a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. One more contract, the approval of the, consider the approval of the contract for the community of family education, school age care coordinator.
And I have to say, as we were getting packets ready today, as they got here tonight, we're we're off, I think, in terms of, does that, are you showing that in your board book?
I am not.
Yeah.
Right.
So so really, I can give you the verbal on that. The school age coordinator position's position has been in place for a long time. What this contract for does is it simply extends the number of days from two hundred and eight days to two hundred and twenty-five days under the same terms and conditions and hourly salary of the contract. One of the key reasons for that is we want to, we want to try to extend our summer school age care program so the program ends closer to the start of the school year. And I can tell you, as a grandparent, when programs end on August second and school doesn't start till August twentieth or August thirtieth, you've got a gap there of the service. So the idea in terms of working with Tammy Skinner was to try to get that program coordination extended, and thus the program extended for another seventeen days. So the change simply is it's at the same hourly salary rate, and it just extends it by seventeen days. So we would look for approval of that extension, and we'll get that contract out in front of you to sign as well.
Any initial discussion? More?
No.
Do we have a motion?
I move to accept the contract.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, and let me just mention it, Chair, Committee Negotiations Chair Loken's guard, and I did look at this contract before, so.
I saw it. It's there.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the contract for the community of family education, school age care coordinator, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consider approval of the twenty twenty legislative priorities.
Considering the where we're at right now as a society, a school district, I think that, I don't know how we get this off the agenda, but I think everything, I think the legislature is kind of focused on other things at this point.
Move to table.
I'd like to move to table the this, these agenda, these legislative priorities, please.
Okay.
Seems inappropriate to go ask for a one percent increase. We're just trying to figure out how to get to distant learning.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? We don't need to get into this now either, but in lieu of what's going on right now, and these seem to not be priorities at the moment based on current, is there any, and I have, I'm saying this, that I have been really, really impressed across the board, across parties, across politics with the response from from Minnesota, from the governor, from the legislature, from local government, to the public. I think that we've been, we've been a pretty good model for the the nation in the way that we've handled this. And I have faith and trust in our institutions, but when I looked at this, I thought my one priority is, is there going to be some discussion of funding the emergency measures the districts are taking?
Yeah, right.
We've tabled, or we have a motion and a second to table this, and I'm fine with it, but that, if we do discuss it again, that might come up.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if we're, if we would even go up to the.
I think the Capitol's going to be closed down.
I agree.
I think it did get closed down.
It did.
So.
Through April fifteenth or something.
Yeah.
Cool. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of tabling the legislative priorities for twenty twenty, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right. Sorry, go ahead.
No.
Introduce the, introduce the next one.
Oh, sure. Consider approval of a local control resolution.
So I, if I can speak to this real quick, the School Boards Association was requesting that local school boards pass a resolution, just kind of stating that, you know, that a school district should be under local control and avoiding, and it was a, they're trying to get a bunch of school boards to sign that, and I think that that has been something that has gone to the side for the time being, and so I ask that we table this this item as well.
That's a motion?
That is a motion to table.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Sounds wise. Thank you for working on those, John, and making these recommendations. Cool, appreciate it. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. That ends our action items for the night. Reports, we did tell the administrative team that there was no need for them to come to this meeting. We did see them last night at our emergency meeting on a Sunday. They all had sandwiches and looked like they had been there for many hours because they had, so.
Yeah.
They deserve a night of not being here, but Dr. Olson?
Yeah, the state Capitol isn't, I think, we really have covered that one. The state Capitol's closed down. I don't see that we'd be able to visit it anyway.
Right.
But I do think, one of the things I would encourage all of you as school board members is to try to stay in contact with our local legislators, particularly as it relates to the kinds of things that they're concerned about and that we're concerned about as we move into this uncharted territory with, you know, school closures, distance learning, nutrition, delivery of services, making sure that we continue to deliver services to our special education students and families, our English language learners, students and families, or students that might have, you know, stress and and other kinds of social emotional issues, five oh four plans, you know, all of those kinds of things. So there may be a time, as you were indicating, Chair Leonard, where we may need to be tapping them on the shoulder and saying, you know, we're going to need some help with some of these things. Because while we continue to receive funding, and that's, by the way, one of the points I didn't make earlier, we're going to continue to see, to receive our same level of funding, and we're going to continue, we're going to need to make a school calendar adjustment and get that back to you at the next meeting, but we're not going to lose dollars on this thing in terms of the school closure. So that's that. The second piece on my report is just a discussion, and it doesn't have to go, you know, super long, but whatever you, your thoughts are, I'm calling it a critical meeting update. And what I'm trying to get at there is, this may be a time where we're not continuing our regular schedule of policy review minute meetings and some other meetings, not that they're unimportant, but that we've got lots of other priorities on our plates. You do, I do, the administrative team does, and there, you know, unless there's something that's critical, essential that we cover at a committee meeting or at a study session or at a board meeting, we try to take those things off the off the table for the time being. Just throw that out there. What are your thoughts?
I agree that if it's not critical, let's not spend our time on it. Do we need, would it be appropriate to do a resolution to table that for a type, period of time, or do we just acknowledge that's what we're doing?
You could, and just, you know, just maybe a resolution or a motion just directing, unless you have different thoughts, that we only hold meetings that we would be considered critical or essential.
I make a motion that we only hold meetings that we consider critical or essential until further notice.
Perfect.
Do we have a second?
Are we okay just, that's legal to do? I I would assume it is, and who's going to make the determination that they're.
We would need to have critic, excuse me, we need to have regular board meetings to conduct business and so forth.
Correct.
We're really talking, but you're totally in charge of.
Are we talking about the committee meetings?
Committee meetings.
Yeah, okay. Makes sense. I just didn't know who was going to determine if that's you that's going to determine and say, this one's a critical meeting, and I'm fine with that. I would add to that, at the supervision of Dr. Olson and Chairman Leonard. Right. If you determine something is not critical, let's not waste our time on it. As far as legality right now, I don't think there's any precedence for anything we're doing, so we're just going to try to do the best we can.
And so does this really require a motion? Or do, would you prefer to have a motion? Because we cancel meetings all the time, committee meetings.
You know, I.
Not all the time, just to be clear. Even once in a while.
It's either way, I think a motion's just fine in a direction, that is then a direction from the school board, or you could direct me that way without a motion, but motion on the table, I think is just fine.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion?
Yeah, I still, who knows how long this is going to last, but we do have a referendum that that I, as far as what I think is critical right now, it hasn't, it isn't very critical, but it's, I mean, we're about a month, month and a half away from, it's starting to be critical as far as planning goes. So would that be, fall under that?
I don't think that this motion excludes talking about those things.
No, I would think, I would think, you know, again, depending upon what your thoughts are, the idea of continuing with the referendum, planning, discussion, budget, stabilization, adjustment, that's probably critical.
Okay. Then I'm good.
Any further discussion? Yeah, I'm, I'm good, too. I think when we think about all of the discussion and all of the expert opinions telling us not to gather, we need to gather for the regular meetings. There are boards in the state that only meet once a month, and that fulfills their obligation. That's not traditionally how we work in this district, and it's not how we have to work in the future. But I think in the interim, also respecting the amount of time and energy and bandwidth that's going into all of these plans at the soup and administrative level, I think their time is better spent, Sarah's time is better spent working on those things than facilitating meetings that really, we can revise the six words in that policy in July and will still be covered just the same, so. Well, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Sarah, I'm sure you wrote that down perfectly. Thank you. I did not. Is that the end of your report, Dr. Olson? Excellent. Board members, we'll just go around the table. Dr. Soderland?
What I would find helpful, because everything's in flux, to communicate also with text and emails, but that text that we sent out yesterday was really helpful, that we're having an emergency meeting, and and my anticipation is, maybe this venue isn't going to be where we're meeting. It might be, but right now, we're not following the guidelines. We're setting a bad example. So I think that one, one other point, too, it's going to be important that we all model the right guidelines and the recommendations, you know? It does us no good to say six feet, and we're doing this and that, and then we're violating it here, so.
Yep.
I think that's all I have.
I just want to say, I was very impressed with the long hours that have been put in this past weekend by our administrators, by our superintendent, and the work ahead for our educators and and all our our employees in the school district. And I think normally I always say I'm only speaking for one-seventh of the board, but I'm pretty sure the whole board, just Dr. Olson and your staff, we've got your back. Whatever you guys need, just let us know.
Thank you.
You're speaking, I'll be having me do.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. And just to add, I've been impressed with our kids as well, and I've mainly been talking to mine because that's who I usually talk to, but I, I suspected they would have a sort of schools out, longer break kind of celebratory, and they haven't been that way. I don't think they've seen terrified either, which is good, but I think they understand the gravity of this and the uniqueness, and hopefully this is the the first and the last time that they have to deal with it and their kids and their kids' kids, so we'll get through it.
I just wanted to, again, thank the teachers for all the work they're doing on their flexible learning as it is now and soon to be distance learning, and for all the parents out there and grandparents to just stick with it. I know I was even frustrated myself, and I'm like, why can't I figure this out? But we just have to remember that we're going to get really good at it, and we have to just have a good attitude so our kids have a good attitude, so, but it's tough, but we'll get through it.
I'm just impressed with the flexibility. It's a large ship, and it's moving and turning fast, so it's good to know that we have a good captain at the rudder.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks.
I guess I'd like to say that Dr. Olson kind of mentioned it a little bit, but grandparents. I really grateful that a lot of them have stepped up. I mean, it's going to be tough for some of the grandparents, but we're there to support them, and we'll all make it through this.
Absolutely.
I guess there's one other thing, too. If I heard from different people, like, maybe don't even have kids in the district, of ways that, there's ways they can help, you know? And I do think that often we see that in times where things are uncertain as the community does step up, but just to keep that in mind, that there are people willing to deliver meals or whatever needs to be done, so.
Sure, sure. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think this is a rapidly evolving situation. Please watch our website, these email updates, and the board meetings for further information. Utilize that email address that's been created to ask questions of the district. We do have upcoming meetings. We have a study session Monday, April sixth, twenty twenty, at six thirty P M. in the Saint Peter Middle School Media Center. We have a finance committee meeting Friday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty, at seven thirty A M. in the district office. We have a regular board meeting for Monday, April twentieth, twenty twenty, six thirty P M., probably to be announced, it might be in this room, it might be, might be moved. A special board meeting Wednesday, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, at seven thirty A M. in the district office, and a study session Monday, May fourth, twenty twenty, six thirty P M. in the middle school media center.
And I'll just mention that special board meeting at that late date is really, we need to adopt a revised budget prior to May first, and we're, we're kind of scrambling in the business office right now, but I'm, unless we get guidance that that date is waived, that's the reason for that special board meeting, and I tried to put it as late as we possibly could in the month to give our our business staff some time to get things in the right way, because that's really the the key budget, because it really reflects a deep dive into all of the details of the budget.
And just to reiterate, please check for actual meeting notices and double-check the, for us and for the public, double-check the rooms and locations, they may change. As I said district office a couple of times, your office is big, but it's not that big, so we might move to the media center conference room or something where we can spread out a little bit more, so. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.
I forgot you had that.
Thank you very much, everybody.